Okay, council agenda. Township Parcypany Troy Hills. Meeting October sixth, 2020. Introduction. Posting of notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing notice in the office of the township clerk. And by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the daily record and Newark Star-Ledger on December twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. And was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel twenty-one and at eleven AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at Parcypany, a www.parcypany.net. At this time, we're going to go to the flag salute. I'll ask the mayor if you can please lead us to the flag salute.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, mayor. At this time, we're going to go ahead and go into the roll call. Mr. Carriffy.
Here.
Ms. Grignani. Ms. Grignani. Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy. Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Also present are Mayor Michael Signano, Business Administrator Fred Carr, CFO Martin Rebe, Township Attorney Jim Lotte, Township Clerk Collette Addit. We also have, I believe it's Valerie Owen who's here from this Abachia. At this time, Council President, we have Laura, I'll begin.
Praise him.
Thank you, Council President. Upcoming meetings, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty at seven PM, the regular meetings. November tenth, two thousand and twenty at seven PM, the agenda meeting. We have the approval of minutes for next meeting, the agenda meeting of September first, two thousand and twenty. And the regular meeting of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, we're going into the presentations and reports. Mayor, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, clerk. Um. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And in spite of the, um. All of the breast cancer organizations, uh, actually standing down due to COVID-19 and not, uh, um, making formal requests for townships to do this this year. We decided to do it anyway, uh, in support because this is very important in our township. This has affected so many people here on this meeting. I often recall our former mayor, James Barberio, speaking about his mother. And this was something that was very personal to him. I've had people in my life impacted by this as well as people in this building that we work with and people sitting on this panel as well. And has impacted, so with that, I would like to read this proclamation into the record. Proclamation for Best Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October, two thousand and twenty. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease. And while we have seen an increase in mammography rates and a decline in death, there is more we can do. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month remains dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. And whereas too many, too many women do not utilize mammography at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method. And whereas the awareness campaign is sending out several key messages, most notably, the American Cancer Society continues to advise women to get an annual mammogram screening once they reach the age forty. Whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates the United States this year, two hundred and seventy-six thousand Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And more than forty-two thousand will likely die from this terrible disease. And whereas in New Jersey, female breast cancer accounts for fifteen point five percent of all cancers and eight percent of all cancer deaths. Now therefore, I, Michael Soriano, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the township of Parcypany Troy Hills, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Here in the township of Parcypany Troy Hills. And ask our citizens to be aware of the importance of early detection, our best protection, and of the risks of breast cancer. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Council President, that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. You're on mute, Collette.
Thank you, maybe I should follow my own directions. Thank you, Council President. At this time, we're going over to the Township Council. I'd like to turn it over to you, Council President.
Yes, if it pleases the Council and the mayor, I have two statements I'd like to read for the record. The first involves our utility rate increases, which I've received many phone calls on, I assume many of you have also. The township has not had a water or sewer rate increase in over ten years. During that time, water and sewer operating expenses have escalated at a rate of six to eight percent. Additionally, funds ranging from one point seven five million to three point two million were transferred annually from the water and sewer funds for use as revenue in the township's municipal budget. A combination of these two actions have drastically reduced the fund balance in both utilities. Although the previous mayor never removed more than what could be replaced by revenue every year, the fund balance was still being reduced by increasing operating expenses. In hindsight, the administration and council should have been increasing the utility rates by two to four percent every year to cover increasing operating expenses. As a councilman for many years, I share in the blame for not recommending to the administration that we annually increase utility rates. The council cannot affect fund balance during our budget reviews. Only the administration can affect fund balance. We can reduce the budget by reducing or eliminating items in the budget with the three council votes. Or we can increase the budget with four council votes. This drastic increase in our utility rates at this time, although very unpopular, will restore the fund balances to approximately what the rates would have been. If we have been gradually increasing the rates annually. The minimum quarterly charts for all one-family residential dwellings with a five-eighth inch meter shall be thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents per quarter with a minimum allowance of ten thousand gallons. As the chart show, and I believe we have a chart showing us in comparison with other water and sewer utilities.
Coming up. There it is, it's up now, man, Council President.
Thank you. As this chart shows, even with this rate increase, the comparison with other utilities in New Jersey. The Parcypany sewer and water rate still compares well with all of them. And that's my statement for the rate increase. I'll let the administration respond to the rest of the netious questions, which I have not answered. Okay, one other item. Someone named Hatel Desai did not like the fact that I did not have a.
Council President, you're muted. Council President, okay, you were muted before.
Got it, thank you. Uh, there's been a mail going around, I think was published in Tap into Parcypany by Hatel Desai criticizing me for not wearing a mask at a Trump rally. The Trump rally was outdoors and I didn't kiss anybody or get too close to anybody, but I was there in a crowd, acknowledged. But indoors is a more serious violation and the governor does not allow any of us indoors to not wear a mask. And I follow that. So my, my statement before Ms. Desai, by the way, I could not find her anywhere in the Parcypany voting roll, so I don't know if she even lives in Parcypany. But regarding Township Council meetings. On March eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 a pandemic. A pandemic is defined as an epidemic occurring worldwide and affecting a large number of people. The best way to prevent illness is to avoid being exposed to the virus, which is spread mainly from person to person. Shortly after the World Health Organization announcement, Governor Murphy implemented executive order number one oh four. Announcing aggressive social distancing measures to mitigate further spread of COVID-19 in New Jersey. New Jersey basically became, came to a standstill. There is still no, currently no vaccine to prevent the disease. And for the past six months, restrictions have been rather severe. Those restrictions have been slightly loosened, but not much. As of September, indoor gatherings must be limited to twenty-five people or twenty-five percent of a room's capacity, whichever number is lower. All attendees at indoor gatherings must wear face coverings and stay within six feet apart. Because of the pandemic and the governor's mandate, in the interest of public health and safety, all Township Council meetings have been virtual. We still have a virtual public portion at each meeting that allows all members of the public to speak, so no one is deprived of their right to speak. Is it now time to return to in-person Township Council meetings? That's a question. If we did, under the latest mandate, the five Township Council members, the Township Clerk, Attorney, Mayor. Minutes Administrator and Chief Financial Officer would take up the Diaz and the first two rows in the front. That would leave room for approximately eighteen visitors. Any more than that, and we would have to cancel the meeting. I have no problem going back to public meetings. However, the council majority has opted to err on the site of caution and remain virtual for the month of October. If in the meantime, the governor opens the state completely, the Township Council would immediately go back to public meetings. Now, there have been some comments on email that say, why don't we use the school auditoriums? My feedback from the school board is, we don't have permission to use the school district. They're concerned about spreading the virus in the schools. And if we were there, strangers were there in large numbers, they would have to disinfect everything, the men's room, the ladies' room, and all of the seats in the auditorium. They're not about to do that. Also, it was suggested, why don't we hold them at the PAL? Similar concerns. And someone even suggested, why don't we have it outside in the football field? Which I don't think would be a good venue for council meetings. So in any event, whenever the governor's restrictions are lifted, we will go back to public meetings happily. And that ends my two reports.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, any member of council have anything to say under the Township Council presentation and reports?
I'd just like to make a.
Okay.
Now, I just would like to make a statement that I too have no problem whatsoever going back to regular meetings. So, you know, Mr. DePiero brings up a lot of good points for the reasons that we have not. But I just want to state for the record that, you know, I have no problem going back to regular meetings whenever he deems it appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Carriffy. Any other member of council under Township Council presentation and reports?
Yes, I have a question, please. The ordinance, the emergency ordinance for the payouts, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents. The amount, a fifth of that amount, a hundred and twenty-six dollars and change. That will be placed on the two thousand and twenty-one budget. A fifth of that amount, I, I'm hoping, and I believe that's what we've been doing, um, previously. We did it in. We did it for two thousand and twenty, sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The retirement payments for the three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars that we did in emergency payout also. My, my question, not only is the hundred and twenty-six for two thousand and twenty-one, but we also, there is a chart that was given to us. And it's still, there's an amount due of five hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents that is still due. Is that amount, the fifth of that amount, is that also going to be placed on the two thousand and twenty-one budget? The next item that I'm concerned about is, we recently had several law enforcement officers retire. I believe there were three within the past several months and weeks. Do we know what their monies will be that will be paid out to them? And are we also going to place that amount of money, a fifth of that amount of money, on the two thousand and twenty-one budget? If I can get some answers to that, I would greatly appreciate it. I'm sorry?
I think I can address it. I can't, your question's coming.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Rebe. Just maybe we'll go ahead and address your questions at this particular point in time.
Okay, thank you. To my understanding, the setup, the planning of the payment of accumulated absence liabilities has been displayed. The five years that special emergency notes allow. And these payments provided in these ordinance are for, have already been allocated in prior years. So in that sense, I am not sure if this is the second or the third year of the authorization plan. But that's what it covers, it covers just one year. And yes, the amounts have to be raised as taxes in the following year's budget.
Yes, I, I understand that. My other question is, the monies that are still due to these officers. I will not name them, but we have a list of their names. And the amount is five hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Is that a fifth of that amount? Is that also going to be placed on the two thousand and twenty-one budget? Or we're not aware, sure of that yet?
Yes, if you look in your chart, you'll see the list, you'll see the names of two officers that are retiring this year. Right after the special emergency. The retirement date of, of February of this year and April of this year. The other gentleman retired earlier this year from housing. But the other payments, so those are the ones that we have for this specific ordinance, Councilwoman. And then it will go under the subsequent budgets for twenty-one and twenty-nine. Under the special emergency, as we've done for all the other ones in the past. So the answer, the short answer is yes.
My answer, fourteen, five hundred and fourteen thousand hasn't been answered. What are we doing with that money that is still on?
Where do you get, where do you get that number? I don't have that either on the special emergency that I have or the chart that was provided by me. Juan, I don't see the five hundred and fourteen that you're talking about.
I, I have them, I don't have the chart, but something I can explain related to special emergency, in this case. When you provide a special emergency note, you may cover two or three years in the past. I don't have the specific breakdown of the years that the installment payments have been agreed upon. But in any case, I can tell you that the amount that is being requested, this ordinance is to cover only two thousand and twenty. Should be raised as taxes in two thousand and twenty-one. So whatever kind of amount that is outstanding will be raised in the following year budget via another emergency appropriation or via appropriation in the budget. If you ask me, what is my preferred choice, it'll be appropriation in the budget. But sometimes you have to do it this way because there's not enough, the way within the budget to accommodate for that, uh, don't stay out.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, any other member from the Township Council would like to say anything under Township Council reports? Going once, twice, okay.
I have a. Collette.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. McCarthy.
Last week, we talked about the enforcing the plastic bag ban and we mentioned CDC rules. Well, I've since found out that the CDC provides no guidance to support stopping the enforcement of plastic bag bans or restricts the use of reusable bags. So I just wanted to state that for the record because there was some confusion about what the CDC guidelines were. It's also my understanding that, you know, the other municipalities who have enacted plastic, uh, plastic bag bans have enforced them during the pandemic. I know that Madison just implemented theirs on March first of this year. And I think it was Milburn that passed theirs on June first. And I think as everyone knows, the state legislature, the state legislators and bipartisan support, um, passed the plastic ban. So, you know, it's my suggestion that maybe we send a letter or some communication to the retailers and grocers. To just let them know that this is in effect and they should be implementing the ban. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Any other member of council?
Just in response to Ms. McCarthy. Has the governor signed the plastic bag ban?
I believe it, I believe that's on his desk for signature. I think he can sign it within the next twenty to thirty days.
That would, would help a lot of stores that are concerned that if our town has a plastic ban and adjacent town does not, people will shop elsewhere. If it's statewide, then that takes the pressure off of a lot of stores.
Right. It would.
Okay, any other member of council? Okay, moving on to Township Attorney.
I have three items on for closed session as indicated in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Lotte. Moving on to the Business Administrator, Fred Carr.
Thank you, Khalid. I just have two items, so council, just tell you that we are still in the midst of our, of our CFO transition with Juan being here Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, depending on our schedule. He was here all day on Tuesday, obviously, since we have a council meeting, putting full days in. We also have Ann here on a part-time basis as we try to clean up our transition. I do know, somebody expressed a concern that, you know, we hired Juan to be the CFO, but he's not fully here. But at the end of the day, you don't leave another municipality in the lurch. It did take us a little while to choose the CFO and actually hire him. And until that time actually happened, he didn't provide notice to his outgoing municipality. And we do need to provide them, you know, at the end of the day, a professional courtesy of transition. You just don't walk in and say, I appreciate it and I'm gone. That's not the way to work. I'm hoping to have Ann out by the twenty-first of this month because that should be fully done and Juan will be fully as the CFO. That goes into my second bullet, which is our budget meeting start the twenty-first of October on Juan's first full, full day here in the township. We should have started these for all intensive purposes at the beginning of October, as we've done in years past, or the end of September. But because of the transition, we're about three weeks behind, I would, what I would like. But we have a full schedule of that and should be done by the end of the month. And starting putting our budget together in comparison of our last, last year's budget, what we need to do this year. And weighing those shortness of the revenues, which is one of the conversations as the Council President talked about. And I encourage the council to ask questions, fully understand and vote for the salary and the salary. The water and sewer rate increase, that's on second reading tonight on the agenda. And to allow for the passing of the resolution which waves the stopper period. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Carr, BA Carr, do we have any idea as to when the county will be giving us the emergency reserve for our COVID, COVID expenses? Being the largest municipality in Morris County, I'm hoping we get a big chunk of money.
Um, yes, so that would be the conversation, the email exchange that I had yesterday with the county administrator. For the small price of a mil, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, I will quit bugging him. But right now, there is no mechanism at Morris County because we missed the cutoff with regards to the size of the counties. The half made in the governor's mandate for direct aid to this, to the municipalities like in Essex County or Middlesex County where I left. Where frankly, my contemporaries in those other counties have submitted their documentation to the county. And have received the checks for their COVID expenses and we in Parcypany, we haven't gotten a dime. And right now, I've asked the mayor to reach out to the governor's office to say, hey. You know, and I've gone to the county numerous times saying, I don't care what your mechanism is. Choose a mechanism of your choice, whether it's a FEMA one, whether you use, I don't care. But we've got about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of documented COVID expenses that I can prove to them as soon as they come up with a mechanism and I can get it there. So the short answer is no.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Under Township Clerk, I do not have a report. Moving along to Township Offices and Committees, anything? Okay, seeing nothing, we're going to move along to the engineering report. I will go ahead and read the engineering report into the record at this time. Twenty twenty road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, construction is substantially complete and there are only punch list items still to be addressed. Work will be completed in October, no council action required. Green Bank Road Safety and Improvements Project, the project is substantially complete and only minor punch list items remain to be completed. A section of new guide rail still needs to be installed once underground utilities are moved. Closeout of the project is expected in October, no council action is required. Various streets reconstruction project, the various streets reconstruction project is complete, no council action required. New England Drive Millian paving project, the New England Drive and Millian paving project is substantially complete and only punch list items remain. All work will be completed in October, no council action required. Simpson Avenue retaining wall project, the Simpson Avenue retaining wall project, construction is scheduled to start in a few weeks and will be completed in November, no council action required. Veterans Park Culvert replacement project, bids were received for the Veterans Park Culvert replacement project and the pre-construction meeting has been scheduled. The concrete box culvert is to be ordered and construction will begin once a delivery date is identified, no council action required. Sheffield Street drainage project, identified eight locations where significant deformation of the large diameter corrugated metal drain pipe created blockages that reduced flow and contributed to the flooding through the rear yards along Sheffield Street. Repairs were made to the pipe and the rear yards were restored. Only minor punch list items remain to be completed, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street improvements, phase five, the Mount Tabor Street improvements, phase five, pre-construction meeting was held. And work is anticipated to start at the end of October and continue to the end of the year, no council action required. Roadway design projects, the following projects are in design, Puttingstone Heights Road Improvements and various culvert repair project, these projects will be bid once design documents are finalized, no council action required. Community Rating System CRS Program, we continue to work with our consultant at the NJDEP to get back into the CRS program. This program provides discounts on flood insurance policies based on a level of activities in which the township participates. The work will continue through at least the end of this year, no council action required. Performance Bond Release, Tabor Lake Block Eighteen, Lot Seven. All work associated with the major soil moving permit at Tabor Lake has been satisfactorily completed. This office has no objection to the release of the Performance Bond Number B one oh five seven nine four zero. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council. Performance Bond Release, Cagnano Orthodontics Block Three Nine Three, Lot One. The developer completed all site work in accordance with the approved plans. Inspections were made during the course of construction and this office has no objection to the release of the Performance Bond Number S three one four six four eight. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council. Fox Run Developers LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block Nine Ninety-eight, Lot Twenty-two. The developer has requested a reduction of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project. Inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted and work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed and is in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit, reference number nine sixty-one dash SB to the new amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council. 700 Mountain Way LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block 14, Lot 9. The developer has requested a reduction of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project. Inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted and work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed as in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit reference number 11107-SB to the new amount of $211,022. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council. Waters Edge or Symphony LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block 450, Lot 14. The developer has requested a reduction of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project. Inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted and work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed and is in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit reference number OD0D16002238 to the new amount of $277,541. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council. Moving on to bids taken. September 16th, 2020 Clondike Booster Station Upgrades to be taken. September 1st, 2020 Yard Waste Transportation to Disposal Recycling. September 7th, 2020 Third Party Billing for Ambulance Services for EMS. September 15th, 2020 Scatter System Improvement Phase Two. September 21st, 2020 Well Drilling and Installation Services Replacement Production Well 21.
October dates, not September.
Oh, I apologize. I'm just moving right along. Thanks for catching that. Thank you for catching that. So just replace all the September with October dates. I'm not going to go over those again unless you want me to, Council President.
Not necessary.
All right, thank you. Moving along to the public hearing. Before I start the public hearing, I want to let the public know that if you have any comments that pertain to the water or sewer, please be advised that we do have a public hearing coming up. And I ask that you reserve all your comments for the public hearing on the water and sewer ordinance. Other than that, if you have any other comments, you can go ahead and speak to them at the public hearing. With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing. Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, now at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask the public to raise your hands. You will have five minutes to speak on any subject other than the water and sewer as previously mentioned. After the five minutes, the council will then address your questions. This will not be a debate back and forth. Okay, so with that being said, let's go ahead and take a look at the list. At this time, I see Mr. Nick Homiak. So let's go ahead and unmute Nick, please.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Nick, how are you?
Okay. I wondered if, I mentioned this before at council and I called cutting the grass and leaving the trash. It's a common phenomenon. It happens all over the place. But we have to start changing this behavior. You should have seen the mess at the end of No Road on this Friday. Someone cut the grass. It had to be a municipal worker. Big piece of styrofoam. Could have picked it up. What does he do? Cuts it with the lawnmower, spreads it all over the place. It was, you know, it took a while to clean up and it's just, it shouldn't be. I recently had a conversation with the administrator in Booton because when I was down in Knoll doing litter abatement, I saw them doing the same thing. They're cutting the grass and leaving the trash. It happens on county, state, and levels. We need some kind of an intergovernmental mayor's conference or something about discipline in the workforce. And in my opinion, the municipal worker who left that mess on Knoll Avenue, he should suffer some type of discipline. And it's not the first time I've seen evidence where they're just not doing what they should do. You wouldn't do it on your own lawn or your own property. And when he's working for the town, that's our lawn, that's our habitat. And to do that is just not right. And there should be some, some reprimand. And it really upset me. When you submit a reported concern and you get the reply, it says successfully resolved, I think they should start telling you how it was successfully resolved. And certain concerns are ongoing. So if you're just doing it one time, it's going to happen again. You got to be proactive. We, we have these people, we're giving them good money. They got to get out there and start looking around what's going on, especially the sanitation. But I'll leave, I'll leave it at that and I'll save my comments like Khalid said, when the water comes up.
Thank you, Nick. All right, at this time, I see Mr. Walter Wellens. Let's go ahead and please unmute Walter. Walter, you there? Walter? Hey, Walter, you there? Okay, you have been unmuted, Walter. Okay, Walter, we have unmuted you on our end. But it doesn't seem like I can hear you at this point. Okay, we'll give you about 30 seconds to see if you're able to figure out what's going on on your end.
Okay, Walter.
You there? Okay, let's see in the meantime if there's anybody else. You're still unmuted, by the way, Walter. Okay, we don't have anyone else. So we'll have to give, Walter, we'll have to give you about 15 more seconds. And if we can't, we can't hear you, we're going to have to mute you and move on.
Maybe Nick can offer some advice.
No, we can unmute Nick at this time. Because we can't have more than one person talking. There he is, he's unmuted again, Walter. Okay, we're going to have to move on. Walter, if you can hear me, if you have any comments you'd like to speak about, you can go ahead and email me at kmadden@parcipity.net. And we can go ahead and see if we can get your comments out there, okay? At this time, we'll go ahead and have to move on. Let's look and see if there's anyone else whose hand is up. Okay, seeing no one else at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion?
Motion made by Ms. Peterson.
Second, Grignani.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing portion is closed. Moving along to ordinances. For introduction, we have the one ordinance with regards to the payout. Just I ask you to review that, then we'll move on to the second reading and public hearing. Okay, seeing that we have no questions, we're going to move along now to the second reading and public hearing. This is for ordinance 2020:28, amending and supplementing Chapter 329 Sewers to Increase Sewer Rates and Charges. And ordinance 2020:29, amending and supplementing Chapter 420 Water to Increase Water Rates and Charges. The notices for the ordinances above were published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Parcipity, Troy Hills, on September 22nd, 2020. The ordinances were introduced at December 15th meeting, 2020 regular meeting. I'd like a motion to accept the ordinances 2020:28 and 2020:29 be heard in their second following readings by title only.
Motion.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, now we have the public hearing for ordinance number 2020:28 and ordinance number 2020:29. Motion to open up the public hearing for the above ordinances, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and look at the public participants again for the public. I just want to state that you may speak only on the water and sewer ordinances at this time. So with that being said, I see that we have Bob and Pat Venezia's up. Let's go ahead and please unmute Bob and Pat Venezia.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Bob, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I believe that the, Bob Venezia, 102 Brook Lawn Drive. I believe that these ordinances, as written, require improvements in several areas before the council votes on them for adoption. These areas include transparency, clarifying wording that deals with rate effective date and reducing the proposed rates to just what is necessary. Regarding transparency, I don't see how the public can comment on rate increases when the amount of rate increase is not even specified on the ordinance summaries that appear in the council agenda meeting. The ordinance summary should be clearly stated that there will be a 39% increase across the board for both utilities. A rate increase of that, of that magnitude will surely generate a lot more feedback than a standard 2% increase. In addition, the full text of the ordinances mentions several reasons why the utility rate increases are necessary. But perhaps the biggest reason is conspicuously absent, although Mr. DePiro did mention them earlier. In the ordinance, there's no mention of the almost $18 million that has been transferred from the utility budgets to the general budget of over the last 10 years. I think that the public would also like to know that this 39% proposed rate increase does nothing to eliminate these transfers. Next, I think that the wording which says that the ordinance will take place immediately upon final passage needs to be more precise. Specifically, the wording needs to describe what will happen when part of the quarterly bill is for usage at the old rate and part at the new rate. If the entire bill will be charged retroactively at the new rate, the ordinance should make that clear. Otherwise, you might get a lot of requests for refunds. Lastly, and most importantly, I believe that a 39% rate increase is excessive based on the revenue that needs to be raised. To illustrate this point, $3.4 million must be withdrawn from the sewer utility fund in order to make ends meet in the 2020 sewer budget. However, if a 39% rate increase isn't active, the sewer fees will increase by $5.6 million annually. This $5.6 million is enough to cover the $3.4 million that is currently being withdrawn from the fund balance with $2 million left over. When the 39% rate increase was originally proposed by the utility consultant, at least two members of the council objected to the size of the increase. Well, your initial reaction was warranted and is supported by the numbers. The council should scale down the size of the rate increase to an amount that is just sufficient to cover the fund balance withdrawals plus maybe a little extra to cover contingencies. So before you vote on the current version of ordinance 2020:28 and 2020:29, I ask that you consider my suggestions and amend the ordinances accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any, any comments or responses from the council or administration on this? Okay, seeing none, moving along. To, I think we see here Nick Homiak. So let's go ahead and unmute Nick.
Okay. The prior tax increase that was proposed by Aunt Koochie for $4.32 average, and I believe that was to amend the, or to pay for the present water infrastructure failures that we have now. And my increase, for example, on my bill will be about $8 more a month as compared to, it would have been $4.32 or even less. So which method was more equitable? And are, are these two proposals, the past tax and this new rate, are, are they actually one in the same? And I would think that the increase overall is really not that great when you think that, you know, water is life and, and you do need it and we're not getting any money from any other sources. It goes to, you know, Space Force or something like that, but it's not going to, to the water here infrastructure for our United States of America. But I don't know if, if you can answer that question, but I would appreciate it. And one more thing, tell me if I'm wrong about this. Minimum users, but in the summertime, your sewer rates go up. They don't stay the same. So what is the cause of that? If you're, if you're staying within the minimum water use, why isn't your water and sewer bill always the same? Why does it increase? And I'm under the impression that we're splitting the overall bill with everybody. Is that, is there any truth to that or am I just imagining things?
Nick, this is Fred. I would never say that the resident is imagining things. But perhaps you're looking at it wrong. But a tax increase has nothing to do with the sewer and the water rates. The sewer and the water systems are self-funded utilities. Their rates must support those utilities in themselves, okay?
All right.
It's based on your usage. It's what goes, I try to tell everybody to make this simple. Whatever flows through the meter is what is, is what is charged to the resident. Your rates are based on two items, your base rate. The base rate, again, for you and everyone else, is what it costs for the system physically in the ground, the pipes, the sewer plant, the insurance, the debt service. If nothing flows at all through the water or the sewer system, there is that base rate, the cost of doing business, having it available. And then there's the usage rate, which is a separate rate, which is based on your meter flow. So when they talk about the average municipal user in Parcipity, they're talking about a family or an individual or a billing person who uses about 12,000 gallons of water in a quarter. That's an average. So if your house, you sit there and go, we don't use 12,000 gallons of water. Well, I can assure you that there's somebody else, because that's the way average works, using more. using more. So that's how the rates are, rates are determined for the minimum user. So when we talk about the minimum user, same on your tax rate when we talk about the average rate for the average assessed value for the city or the township of Precipity, they just talked about that base rate. For some kind of a metric, and then you have to compare yourself to that metric to see what you will actually pay. And in response to the previous gentleman's conversation about upon final passage needs to, for instance, be clearly defined, we can't tell you what that date is because until such time as the council passes the ordinance and it's published in the newspaper, you can tell you what that is, okay? And more importantly, that language is set by statute. We don't make this up, that's right out of the law. It says upon fact, we're hoping, I am asking that the council pass this and that the clerk publishes as soon as possible and the rates will take place for all intensive purposes on Tuesday, the thirteenth of October, when the billing cycle and the bills start going out.
Could I, could I ask one more? Is there a threshold in the sewer and water surplus that is a maximum, that it can't go beyond?
No.
So the water, so this money is in trust for, forever for, for water infrastructure?
Correct. So what should happen, because the council president talks about is that every year during the budget conversation in the fall, like right now, council and the administration has a conversation about the budget and the water rates and the tax rates and what we're gonna do next year. And if we evaluate the water and the sewer rates and say we're not gonna raise them, okay, that's a decision. Or we're gonna leave them the same or whatever, but need to have that discussion for the viability of the system. Trust me. Next year, we're gonna be having this conversation. We may not raise the rates, we may, we're not gonna lower them because I'm gonna have to throw myself on somebody's table if we do. But, you know, we have to have that evaluation to say, are we paying our bills? With regards to transferring money from the sewer utility and the water utility, that's a council conversation. I believe in previous conversations, many of the council members have expressed a concern and we're working very diligently to wean ourselves from that use of those monies in the current fund.
Thank you Fred and thank you Nick. With that, let's see if there's anyone else here with their hands up. Okay, I don't see anyone else. So with that being said, we're gonna move along. I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call Mr. Carriffy.
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson and Mr. DePiero? Mr. DePiero? Council President?
Looks like he's got a little yellow bar up there. I don't know, I think that means he's okay.
Okay, so we have, we have the votes, whereas, so the public hearing has been closed. Whereas the above ordinances were read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved, that said ordinances be passed on final reading and a notice of final passage of said ordinances be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero? Okay, Mr. DePiero, looks like you might have had a bad connection there. Alright, we have four votes, so the motion passes to pass the resolution at this time. Again, now we're moving along to ordinance twenty twenty colon twenty seven. There is no action on this ordinance, so I just asked the council to quickly review it before we move on to the non-consent agenda. Okay. Moving along to the non-consent agenda, resolutions. R twenty twenty one eighty-two, ending and declaring an emergency for the purposes of authorizing the immediate enactment of ordinances twenty twenty colon twenty eight and twenty twenty colon twenty nine pursuant to NJSA forty colon sixty-nine A dash one eighty-one. Can I please have a motion for the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Carriffy. Any discussion on this? Okay, no discussion, seeking.
I just want to say that I don't think anyone on council is going to increase these rates unless, unless it was necessary for the town's financial stability going forward. And this is what the consultant study came up with and I think, you know, it's, it's a sound financial practice to do this. Yes. Are we voting now or just comment?
Not yet, Ms. McCarthy, but thank you for your comment. Any other comments on the, under the discussion portion of this?
I just got knocked off, my computer went blank. I just signed in again. Did I miss anything?
We were about to shut down the meeting. No, we, we just passed the ordinance on colon twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine and we are now moving along to the non-consent agenda. We're under the first resolution declaring an emergency for the purpose of authorizing the immediate enactment of those ordinances and we're on the discussion. We've had a motion and a second, we're on discussion.
Clerk, before we vote on that, you should offer the council president the opportunity to vote on ordinances twenty eight, twenty nine, because he was off electronically.
Thank you, Mr. DePiero. What is your vote on the ordinance number twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine? We had a motion made by Ms. Peterson and seconded by Ms. McCarthy with a roll call with all four council members answering yes. How would you like to vote on both ordinances?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DePiero. We'll put that in for the record and thank you.
I wasn't, my computer never did that before, it just turned off.
No, no problem. It's the hazards of the electronic age.
That is correct. So now, Mr. DePiero, we're under the discussion portion of the first resolution that is declaring an emergency for the purpose of the immediate enactment of ordinance number twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine. And we've had the discussion, would you like to offer any discussion under that ordinance, under that resolution? I apologize.
Not really.
Okay, perfect. So we had a motion by Ms. Peterson, a second by Mr. Carriffy. We're gonna go into roll call, Mr. Carriffy. Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving along to R twenty twenty dash twenty-three. Okay, now before I begin this, we're going to ask Ms. Dolan just to be available because under the discussion portion, we probably will need her comments. So R twenty twenty dash twenty-three, resolution determining the form and other details of fourteen million seven hundred and forty-five thousand general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty, consisting of thirteen million forty-five thousand general improvement bonds and one point seven million golf and recreation utility bonds of the township Precipity Troy Hills and the county of Morris, New Jersey and providing for their sale. Need a motion? May I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Peterson and a second by Mr. Carriffy. Any discussion on this? Okay, no discussion? Okay, so without any discussion, we're gonna move along to the roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
I thought we were gonna have Valerie make a comment first.
Well, I was waiting for someone to jump in and say, you know, so we could queue her in, but okay, we can have Valerie, are you there?
That should be before the roll call.
Yep, I'm here. I wasn't sure when you wanted me to jump on, so.
Perfect. I was waiting to see the council president when he wanted this, but we can go on now.
Okay, um, you have bond anticipation notes that are scheduled to come due and what myself, bond counsel, your financial advisor, your administration, we looked at those, we looked at those notes that were coming due and we looked at the debt that you've authorized and not issued debt on. And so we looked at it and we've structured a deal that really comes through with issuing some bonds in both, in the general capital and in the golf and recreation. And then in the utilities, we have, we have notes that are gonna end up going also. So this is really for the bond sale. We need to have these resolutions passed so that we can then advertise those bonds so that we can then prepare and finalize the official statement and get the bond sale. Our goal is to try to have the sale by the end of this month, if possible, while the rates are advantageous to the township.
That's the bottom line, right Valerie? The rates are?
The rates are an advantageous time to take advantage of them, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, you had the roll call for everybody except me.
Well, we have the roll call for everyone except you. Yes, that is correct. So go ahead, Mr. DePiero, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, good. Alright, so motion passes. Moving along to R twenty twenty one eighty-four. Resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of general improvement bonds of the township Precipity Troy Hills and the county of Morris, New Jersey into a single issue of bonds aggregating thirteen million forty-five thousand in principal amount. Need a motion please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Moving along to R twenty twenty dash twenty-five. Resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of golf and recreation utility bonds of the township Precipity Troy Hills and the county of Morris, New Jersey into a single issue of bonds aggregating one point seven million in principal amount. And please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. Carriffy, oh well, actually, sorry, discussion. Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes. At this time, we're moving over to the consent agenda. I'd ask you to please review that. And if you have any questions or concerns, please let us know now. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna be moving along to the approval of the payroll and bills list. CFO Aunt Cucci recommends authorization for payment. One, authorized payment of the October second twenty twenty regular payroll estimated at one point six million each and payment of bills from bachelor list of October first twenty twenty through October third, estimate totaling one point, one million eight hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Can I please have a motion? A motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy? Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and go into the executive session. I'm gonna go ahead and read the executive session resolution. Before I read the executive session resolution, I'd like to let the public know that we do not anticipate any action at this time. And once we move into executive session, you will be cut off. So thank you for participating and if you decide to stay, we'll see you after for the adjournment. Going again, executive session, resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, whereas the township councils of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas the township council wishes to discuss attorney client privileged information, State Alcohol Beverage Commission Hotel Liquor License Regulations dash Par Miller's Ale House Acquisition of Property, Stormwater Drainage Aisement Cora Valley, seven hundred and fifty Edwards Road Block seventy-six, Lot six, and potential litigation estate of John Minefusco. And whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes will be made public. Now therefore, be it resolved by the township council, the township Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. May I please have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, if you can please adjourn to closed session, you'll know where in closed session when the color changes in the, in the window.
Need a motion?
Okay, we're back in open session. Can I please have a motion to reconvene into open session, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, we're back into open session. Can I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you everybody and everybody have a good night.
Have a good night.